All right, I have 104. And good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, I've got Councilman Burnett, representing 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Cassell is running a little bit late today, he'll be on later. Don't see Councilman Glover, I don't see Councilman Porter, and I see Councilman Ramos. And I don't see any other members of the Council. Members representing the Office of the President do have Nikki Thompson online.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Steckman. And Erin DeGraffenwright. All right, and representing the Mayor's Office, do have Natasha Meehew on the line. And Nina Demelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, so this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0106, Studying Report Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department for the Purpose of Requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department in consultation with certain other agencies submit a report to the Mayor and City Council evaluating the policies, practices, and internal control systems of the department, and evaluating the potential establishment of an office dedicated to compliance investigations within the fire department, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on July 19, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett, open for to Congressman's sponsor.
Thank you. And am I coming in okay? Can you confirm? Am I good?
Good.
Yep. Okay. So, we've heard this one a couple of times, and I was really hoping to have a resolution today, but I am actually just going to ask the committee to consider amendments for this one, and they wanted to follow 210107. We discussed, and everyone should have received the amendments on this, I want to say at least two days ago, in your inboxes, but I'm happy to walk through them. They're pretty technical in nature for, I'll start with 21-0106. So there's two amendments for this one. One was at the request of Fire Department, and one was to, well, both were at the request of Fire Department. The first amendment number one extends the reporting deadline. Oh, there we go, perfect. From, the bill has written, has it at 120 days, this would push it out to 210 days for reporting. And the second amendment is removing some language that, trying to find that section, I think we talked about this in the last hearing. This is about the reporting system, which is number eight on the bill, around internal performance management systems. And this is just clarifying language there. Again, very technical in nature, nothing that substantively changes what we're asking the department to do, but just clarifying language for that particular question. I'll take any questions from the committee on either of these.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. Any questions from the committee?
These were the amendments, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
These were the amendments you presented last time?
The one change on the timeframe? The timeframe is new. Last time, we talked about the amendment number two.
But the timeframe that it was 2:40, now it's 2:10. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the committee? Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move on to agency reports, and we'll start off with the Fire Department.
Mr. Chair, no objections to the bill.
Okay. And actually, I'll go through agency reports, if you still stand by your, your initial report, totally fine. And if you have any issues with the amendments as proposed, please make that known. As I understand from Councilman Burnett, he's still working with the administration on some of the details on this reporting, and so there'll be some more back and forth. We're not going to vote on this bill today, we're not going to vote on the amendments either, but we are just getting them out there so folks know how this thing is progressing. To that, with that, I'll move on to the Board of Fire Commissioners, if we have somebody online, we may not. All right, I'll move on to the City Administrator's Office.
Good afternoon, sorry, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, had an issue, I'm muting. Nina Demelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. City Administrator's Office stands by its previous report, and will continue to work with the sponsor on any additional amendments to the bill.
Thank you, Nina. Law Department?
Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Ruley of the Law Department. We stand by our bill report, and we'd approve the amendments for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. And Department of Finance?
Good afternoon, Mara James of the Department of Finance. We stand by our report, we do not oppose this legislation.
Thank you. Labor Commissioner's Office? I don't think we have somebody online from Labor Commissioner's Office. I'll move on to the Offices of the Inspector General, which we may not have anybody from that office either. And the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And the Department of Human Resources. Okay, as I mentioned, we're not going to be voting on the amendments or the bill today. There's still a little bit of work that Councilman Burnett and the administration are working out to make sure that this actually is something achievable, and, you know, to that end, Councilman Burnett, anything you want to add before we recess this bill?
No, I have a meeting next week, again, with the mayor's staff on the, so we'll come back to the table and hopefully be able to go in a direction. I don't know what the direction is, but we're going, we're moving. So, but yeah, well, I'll keep everybody in the loop on additional revisions to the bill, as written.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. With that, we will recess that bill and move on to the next bill, 21-0107, for the Purpose of Requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department in consultation with certain other agencies submit a report to the Mayor and City Council evaluating departmental operations, fire suppression, and emergency medical services staffing, community risk reduction programs, and performance management programs, and providing for a special effective date. This was introduced on July 19, 2021, and is sponsored also by Councilman Burnett. Councilman Burnett, you want to give us an update?
Similarly, this bill is something that we're also going to be going into weeds on a little bit. Next week, there are amendments, two of which we discussed in the last hearing. The only new thing with this, or not last week, last hearing, is the 180 to 210. And I believe number two is at the request of the Law Department. Number three was the, again, similarly around reporting systems, all very technical and not non-substantive in any real way. I'll take questions, but similarly, more work to be done.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any questions from the committee on this bill? Or excuse me, on the amendments? All right, seeing no questions, I will go to agency reports, and we'll just touch on the same folks, starting with the Fire Department.
Mr. Chair, we don't have any objections to the bill either, and we're working through it as well.
Okay, thanks, Chief Ford.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Councilmembers, Kim Washington, on behalf of the Fire Department. We have to.
I'm sorry, Kim, you broke up at the end of that statement.
Mr. Chair, actually, Kim was going to answer, but I chimed in because she was having some technical difficulties.
No problem, thank you.
All right, I don't think I can do video and talk at the same time, so.
Nope, totally fine, thank you, Kim. We'll move on to the.
Stop video, because I don't think I can do.
And next, we've got the Baltimore City Administrator's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The City Administrator's Office stands by its report.
Thank you, and we've got the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair, again, the Law Department stands by its report and approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent, thank you. And finally, Department of Finance. We saw a little one in there for a second.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report and do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Okay, Councilman Burnett, I understand we'll be coming back, this bill and the previous bill, to work out some details before we actually vote on both the amendments and the final bill. But I'm saying you just wanted to have an opportunity to update folks on the progress. So, with that, any closing statements or questions from the, from the committee? All right, we're going to put that bill in recess, moving through pretty quickly. The next bill that we're going to hit here is Bill 21-0164, the Decennial Fire and Emergency Medical Services Redistricting Plan, for the Purpose of Requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Chief. Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry.
No worries. So, for the Purpose of Requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Chief to prepare Decennial Fire, Decennial Fire and Emergency Medical Services Redistricting Plan, requiring the Fire Chief to present the plan to the Mayor and City Council, requiring the plan to be approved by resolution of the Mayor and City Council, requiring the Mayor and City Council to amend the plan under certain circumstances, and generally relating to the redistricting of the Baltimore City Fire Battalions and Emergency Medical Services Districts. This bill was introduced on October 4, 2021, by Councilmember Chris Burnett. With that, I will hand the floor back to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So, this bill is similar to legislation that was passed in Annapolis for our Police Department, which will require the Fire Department to evaluate the size of each Fire Battalion and EMS district every 10 years, to ensure that we have the appropriate resources available to service the needs of our communities. Last year, there was a proposal to disband two fire companies to reduce overtime costs, and to offset funds that were lost as a result of the pandemic. But this wasn't the first time that proposed closures have occurred due to budget shortfalls, and the practice of disbanding companies to save money dates back about 30-plus years. The problem is, there's no methodology that goes into this ad hoc process that provides details as to why specific resources are cut, and there's very little consideration given to the adverse impact that these decisions will have on affected communities, or how the increased workload will contribute to employee burnout, which in turn can drive overtime cost backup due to personnel being out on medical. The last time the district lines were redrawn for fire suppression units was during the 1990s, and this would essentially put a process in place, so regardless of who the administration is, who the Fire Chief is, that there's a very clear process in place to update population information, call volume data, and fire and EMS trends, to make sure that our Fire Department is operating in the 21st century. So, with that, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any questions from the committee? All right, we'll move on to agency reports, starting again with the Fire Department.
Chair members, we stand by our report, we have no objections.
Thank you, Chief Ford. The Baltimore City Office of the Administrator?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Nina Demelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I don't believe we have a bill report on file, but we have no objections to the legislation.
Thank you, Nina. Next up is the Law Department.
Hey, Mr. Chair, the Law Department has reviewed this bill.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Councilmembers, Kim Wash.
Please, Kim, you are in and out. Hillary will come back to you. Kim, did you have something else you wanted to add? Seems Kim may be having technical difficulties. Hillary, you can continue, I'm sorry about that, if.
Oh, no, no worries.
You finish.
Yes, Hillary, really, the Law Department. The Law Department's concern with this bill is it should be an ordinance, not a resolution. So, we did a few, we put in two really small amendments that just changed the language so that we're making sure this is being approved by ordinance. And otherwise, with respect to the content and everything else, we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency with those, you know, those two small amendments.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay, and next up, we have the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report, we do not oppose this legislation. I would just note that for our fiscal impact, we don't anticipate a cost for the city, we're assuming that the report will be conducted internally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mara. Any questions from the committee? All right.
So, not a question, but the committee should have received an amendment to this, and I think it should cover the Law Department's concerns, but again, this is a part of a larger conversation on all these bills that I'm going to be having. So, either way, if it doesn't land where we need it to land, then obviously, we'll keep talking. There we go. So, I believe, Hillary, if you want to jump in, I can't recall if we got this over to you or not ahead of the hearing. I've been sort of bogged down with the other two bills, but we weren't moving this one anyway. So, if this doesn't land where you guys need to do, then we'll keep talking, obviously.
This looks pretty much exactly like what's attached to my report, so I think we would approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Perfect, okay. So, sorry, it's our issue.
No, no, all good. Thank you for, you got right to where I think we need to be, just making sure that we did intend to address those concerns. So, it sounds like we will get there. I understand we're not going to vote on this today, but we do have the pieces, I think, in order to get there. Any other questions, comments, otherwise, from the committee, before we move to public testimony? All right, seeing no questions, we'll move on to public testimony. And we'll get the directions up for that. One moment. All right, so, committee staff will coordinate our public testimony, so please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. It's located on the bottom right side of the WebEx application. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking, for the record. Users who call in and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host, one by one. If you don't wish to testify, please say so when you are muted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony, and if a speaker is an audible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, I do not see any hands raised at the moment. And if you have anybody on the phone lines? Nope, no one on the phone lines. Give you another five seconds before we close up public testimony. I imagine it's not much on this bill. All right, we are ending public testimony. We've already discussed the amendments. To that end, we're not going to vote on them today, but I do want to give Councilman Burnett any other closing statements you'd like to have an opportunity to address.
No, I'm just glad the, you know, this one seems pretty straightforward, and, you know, we do have support. Obviously, we'll continue to work with the Fire Department and the Mayor's Office to make sure that we're getting all these to a place that gets the information out that we need, makes the reforms that we need, and puts, you know, good policy forward. So, committed to continue to work with them and look forward to our next hearing on these. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Councilman. With that, we are going to put this bill in recess and move on to our next bill. The next bill we're going to hear is LO21-0012, Baltimore City Fire Department, EMT Firefighter Pre-Employment Screening and Hiring Process, for the Purpose of Requiring that the Fire Chief or their designated to present information on the overall recruitment, pre-employment screening, and hiring process for EMT firefighter application cycle that began in 2020, but was postponed due to COVID-19. This oversight hearing is mandated in Article 9, Section 1-9, Reporting Requirements of the Baltimore City Code. The bill was introduced on July 19, 2021, by myself, Councilman Conway. And this is pretty straightforward, we've touched on this a number of times, and, you know, we can jump right into it. I have some questions for the Fire Department, but I will allow the Fire Department to give us an update on where we are with the process. We'll start with the HCP report from the Fire Department.
Yes. Chairman, Councilmembers, currently, we are going through the interview process. The physical agility test starts next week. The interview process will run this entire week. It began Monday. We are both doing day, and we're running long evening, so the interview process is running on certain days up to 7:00 p.m. We're also working Saturday, an interview process on this coming Saturday, in order to facilitate, we're still using community people. Like, I'm greeting them every morning to encourage them, and to thank them, and I'm actually seeing them when they leave in the evening. So, that process is ongoing. It looks like it's going pretty well at this time. As I said, the interview process will end Saturday. Members had an opportunity to select their times, and they did, their availability when they wanted to interview. I'll go back to this after, after this weekend, starting Monday, the physical agility test begins. And I have Chief Shiloh, my deputy chief over training, and I'd like her to give a summary of how that process is going to work.
Thank you, Chief Ford, committee members. On Monday, we will start the physical agility testing here at the Fire Academy. They will have the opportunity to participate. They will be tested on their first round. So, history has told us that 80% of those members are going to pass on the first time. Once they come through, they pass the test, they're gone. The 20% that are going to have issues, who may be unsuccessful, or who fail that physical agility test, we're going to hold them till the end of the session. There's two sessions. For the test, it'll be a morning session, an afternoon session. Those groups, whoever fails in the morning session, will hold them until the end of that group. We'll go over where they failed on the course. We'll also go over some strategies and tactics to make them successful in follow-up tests. They'll be given a document for, it's a prep guide, that will outline exercises, a workout regimen for four weeks. They will be able to come in and practice twice a week. We're going to dedicate Wednesdays and Saturdays for practice sessions. We'll have two practice sessions each day. We'll have Fire Department members who are mentors, who will go over workouts with them, take them back on the course, go through the course, and give them every opportunity to be successful on their second round. The ones who fail the first round will schedule for four weeks out. We know that in order to improve strength and endurance, a minimum of four weeks is what's recommended for improvement. So, that's why we've gone with four weeks out for a second attempt. I don't know if I explained that well, or if anybody has any questions.
And I'm going to point out one other thing, even during the interview process, and there's a certain area where the individuals who are applying and interviewing for the job are staging before they go into their interviews, they're having the opportunity to look at the entire process of the physical agility test on a widescreen television in front of them that's running on loop. So, and not only that, we've already sent them packages and sent them the links to the physical agility test during the actual application process. So, they've had that for a while, and it's been resent to them as well.
Awesome, thank you. And actually, I'll actually open up the floor to questions from the committee, if folks have questions. I know I have a few. So, you guys just touched on the fact we are moving into the physical agility tests. Have we started the oral board interview as well?
That's what I was thinking about, that's been going on this whole week. The oral board interview has been going on this whole week. Today, it's running from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Yesterday, it ran 11 to 7:00. I think Monday, it ran 9 to 4:00, and Saturday, I can't remember, Friday, it runs 9 to 4:00, and I think Saturday, it runs, yeah, 10 to 4:00. So, the only dynamic, Mr. Chair, that, and I hadn't said this year, I forgot to grab you one time after you had brought this up, you told us to try to look at during weekends and evenings. We focused on that, on the oral interviews, on the oral board part. It's not possible to do the physical agility at night, because the way it's set up, it could possibly cause tripping hazards and a whole bunch of lighting issues. So, we decided to move away from that, but we are doing weekends.
That's awesome, really good to hear. And I'll be curious to see how well that works for folks, and actually following through on the process. Okay, and then for the, for the oral board interview and the physical ability test, do candidates receive a numerical score, or is it pass/fail?
The physical agility test is pass/fail. All interviews, they're scored.
Got it.
Yeah.
And for the oral board interviews, is there a practitioner sitting through that process to ensure integrity in the process, making sure that folks have a fair shot?
We, they are trained, the citizens are the ones that do the interviews. They're trained when they come in, and we have HR people who rotate in and out of these rooms to assure that integrity of the process is maintained.
Excellent. And then I know we touched on this in the last hearing about NeoGov and the self-scheduling application. Were we able to use that this time around?
Yes, NeoGov was used during the interview process.
Okay. And how's it worked out so far?
As far as I haven't heard, I haven't, we haven't done an evaluation of it, but from what I've heard, so far, it's working well. But we haven't done a final evaluation of it. I think after Saturday, we can look at the entire picture, and we have a better perspective of it. And we also plan on, and we did this last time, Mr. Chair, and in fact, we did it for the last two times, when, after we completed, we did almost like a post-incident assessment on it, just like we were running a call, just like we're running a major incident to troubleshoot it. This time, we're going to do the same thing. I think I'm going to expand the group to also the recruitment committee, because I don't think, I think we did them separately. I think I'm going to put them together to try to figure out if we can get a better, more informed perspective as we work through it.
Excellent. Then I, one more question. When do we anticipate completing the pre-employment screening process?
Chief Shiloh, are we talking four weeks of next week?
Counting any of those people who may fail, and we need to schedule out, the very last date possible would be the second weekend, January.
And at that, at that point, it's up to HR certifying the list and specificity.
And I didn't clarify for the, for the physical agility test, were we able to use NeoGo for that as well?
Chief Shiloh, I don't, I don't know if we use NeoGo for that.
From what I have been told, is that when they leave their oral interview, they're given the opportunity to schedule a NeoGo. they're given the opportunity to schedule a Neo Gov that, for their first test. Those people who are unsuccessful, we will schedule them here at the Fire Academy for their follow-up in four weeks.
So we'd expect that, that, that final number, uh, as far as those individuals that would have to follow up schedule, what we, we expect if it's twenty percent, that number is gonna be pretty small. It'll, it'll be somewhere around fifty, I would imagine. Fifty or sixty, I'm just fifty to seventy-five.
Okay. All right, uh, excuse me, are there any other questions from folks on the committee about the hiring process?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chair. Um, Chief, you, you mentioned um, the, I guess, additional flexibility for scheduling. Can you, I guess, elaborate a little bit more on how this was different than, I guess, previous, previous processes? Um, I know some of them have been talked about in the committee, so I just wanted to dig in a little bit on that.
Some of the, we, we normally work with people on scheduling and, and as far as the physical agility test. Normally during the interview process, you were given a time and we did normal work hours Monday through Friday. This time we extended hours. We allow people to use Neo Gov to, to schedule themselves and, and quite frankly, I, I don't know what the final outcome is gonna come, but I can tell you that the, the number that we have made, that have not um, reached back to us to verify that they're going to be there is very, very, very small. When I say very, very small, it's, it's, it's minuscule in comparison to what historically has happened. Now, I don't know if they're all gonna show up, but as far as whether or not they have, they have stated that they're gonna show up and confirm, that number's been pretty high.
Okay, um, no, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, that's all. That's all. Now, I, I do know the numbers are gonna be different because we, just from the numbers we had on the first two days is more than the number that, that didn't confirm. So we know we're gonna have a larger number that don't show up. But that's not unusual for any, 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 any process.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that was only question that, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any other questions? All right, so you know questions? Um, we are going to go to recess on that bill and move on to our uh, fourth or fifth and final bill for, for the day. And this is Bill LO twenty-one dash zero zero one five Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations. For the purpose of requesting that the fire chief present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill is introduced on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one by myself, Councilman Conway. And, and during our, our last committee meeting held on September first, I mentioned that Truck Five, which is located in, on East Twenty-Fifth Street, was ranked as the busiest truck company in the country with four thousand eight hundred and sixty calls for service. I requested that the fire department provide the committee with a breakdown of the number of the EMS and fire suppression calls that Truck Five responded to during the last fiscal year. And that data shows that they responded to three thousand nine hundred EMS calls, uh, one thousand three hundred and fifteen fire suppression calls and four hundred and twenty-nine box, uh, box responses. Those numbers follow a citywide trend that the fire chief has been speaking about for years that more than eighty percent of the fire department's calls for service are for medical related incidents. These oversight hearings will follow a similar structure that our crime stat meetings have followed, where the fire department will present information on the top ten box areas slash neighborhoods where the highest number of EMS calls for service are. We'll do a deep dive into what the health disparities are that are driving call volumes in those areas. And we'll do an evaluation of how we can supplement emergency research, uh, responses with the appropriate services and resources going forward. So as we continue to look at public safety issues through a public health lens, it's very important that we conduct regular evaluations of our EMS system in order to make sure that the necessary changes to keep pace with the changing dynamics, that we make the necessary changes to keep pace with the changing dynamics in our city. So um, with that, I'll move on to agency reports and we just got one, once again, the fire department, um, Chief Ford. Well, cheers.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, um, I, I have some people that really worked hard on this, Dr. Ben and Chief Max, Chief Jim Matts. I'd like to turn this presentation over to them at this time.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, members of the city council. Uh, thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak on these topics today. I'm joined with my esteemed colleague, Dr. Benjamin Lawner. He's the medical director of the fire department. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Sure. Hold on one second while we give you the rights.
Sure.
All right, you should have the ability.
Can everybody see that now?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent. So as you had said, you would ask us to speak a little bit on some topics of, around EMS operations and EMS stats. What we started with today for purposes that are part of this presentation, and bear in mind, it's very difficult to present the, the depth of what you're asking within a graphically pleasing way. This is the best way we could present the top ten neighborhoods. The top ten box assignments are as follows. It starts with box fourteen dash fifty, which is on our southwest Baltimore corridor. That, that box area is responsible for twelve hundred and ninety-seven responses. The highest neighborhood that is involved in that particular box area is Carrollton Ridge and they account for over a thousand calls of the twelve hundred in that area, followed by, uh, you know, New Southwest, Mount Claire, as well as Union Square. The next box area in sequence is box area thirteen dash seventy, which accounts for twelve hundred and seventy-five incidents over the last fiscal year. The largest neighborhood in that area is Upton with nine hundred and sixty-three incidents, followed by Drew Heights, Madison Park and Sandtown Winchester. The third box is thirty-three dash fifty, um, which involves eleven hundred and eighty-nine incidents. The largest amount of those calls come from the McKeldery Park area as well as Milton Monford, which account for roughly a thousand of those calls. They're also followed by Care, Patterson Place, Madison East End and Mid, Middle East. The fourth box, uh, largest box would be, accounts for one thousand and eighty incidents and the largest share of those come from Penn North, followed by Drew Heights. The fifth largest box assignment area is fifty-one dash one and that accounts for one thousand and fifty-two incidents from fiscal year twenty-one. The largest neighborhoods in there were Elwood Park Monument, Baltimore Highlands, and then they would be followed by smaller ones like Patterson Park Neighborhood, Orangeville, Orangeville Industrial Area, Madison East End. The sixth largest box is thirteen dash forty and that accounts for just over a thousand, a thousand twenty-four incidents. Those neighborhoods again are gonna be accounted for by Upton, Madison Park at seventy, followed by Bolton Hill, Heritage Crossing and Charles Village. We're doing these box assignment. At the end, Chairman, I'm gonna actually just show you the top ten neighborhoods. So I'm kinda walking through what you asked for and then I'll, I'll show you from there. Seventh and eighth, uh, most, uh, highest call volumes are, the seventh will be thirteen dash eighty, which accounts for one thousand and fourteen incidents. And those neighborhoods are Penn North at four hundred and fifty-four, followed by Sandtown, Sandtown Winchester, Drew Heights and Upton. The eighth box, which is Northwest Baltimore, accounts forty-five dash forty, which accounts for nine hundred and eighty-two incidents. And that's the neighborhoods of Levendale, uh, Mount Washington and then Cold Spring. And then our last two large boxes are twenty-nine dash twenty, which once again is West Baltimore, Northwest Baltimore. And that's at nine hundred and thirty-two incidents last fiscal year. Those neighborhoods are Cold Spring, Park Lane, Silburn, and then they were followed by Greenspring. And then the last box area is eight dash one, which is essentially West Baltimore. That accounts for nine hundred and eleven incidents and those neighborhoods are Sandtown, Sandtown Winchester at six hundred and seventy-one, Midtown Edmondson, Harlem Park, Ridgeville, Green Lawn and Winchester. What I did was I, I did like a quick graphic of the top five and then I'll have a, a running list of the top ten. The top five neighborhoods highlighted here will show primarily account for Northeast Baltimore corridor over here, which is really your, your Sedona, your Frankfurt areas as well as Bel Air Edison. And your top, um, three areas over on the west side are gonna be your Upton, your downtown, as well as Sandtown Winchester. What I did is I put them in a top ten order and I gotta be honest with you, when I was going through this with our I T department, I didn't realize there's actually a neighborhood called Downtown, but there actually is a neighborhood breakdown called Downtown that actually runs from on the east side, it's gonna be Fallsway, Paca Street, Lombard Street on the south and it runs along the forty Madison Monument Corridor roughly. So that accounts for the most incidents last fiscal year at four hundred, uh, four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. And then you can see as it walks down, Frankfurt at thirty-six, thirty-five, Sandtown, Sandtown Winchester. At thirty-five, forty-seven, going down, Upton, Bel Air Edison, followed by Brooklyn, Broadway East, Carrollton Ridge, which is southwest, Penn North, and then Cherry Hill is the last of the top ten. And that was at nine hu, uh, nineteen hundred and thirty-four incidents. Some of the other things that they asked us to talk about today was in terms of call volume, about what was our averages for service daily, weekly, monthly. What I did is I, I spread these out and then I went over the numbers as well over the last three fiscal years to kinda give you a gauge. The average calls for service over daily, weekly and monthly, our daily average in fiscal year twenty-one is four hundred and twenty-seven incidents. But I want you to remember that these are strictly EMS. When you add in the suppression, those numbers really average about five fifty a day, but the number with EMS is four twenty-seven. Weekly, we average about twenty-nine ninety-seven and monthly, um, twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven. The peak call volume time of day, day a week and time of month, they're all pretty relative across the last three years. The time of day where we're the busiest is between twelve o'clock and six o'clock at night. The day of the week right now over the last two fiscal years has been Monday. For some reason, Monday just seems to be that at the end of the weekend, we have an up surge. The time of the month tends to be the end of the month where we have the most increase in calls. Month of the year on this fiscal year tends to be June, but it tends to run the second quarter. When you start to get into your May, June, July, something along those lines tend to be our busiest. What I did next was I actually ran the numbers over the last three fiscal years to kinda give you a gauge. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Do, do you mind if I stop it here and, um, to allow folks to ask questions? Cause I think you, you provided a lot of really interesting data. And some of that was actually surprising to see. Um, so I, I wanna give the committee an opportunity to ask questions about what they've seen so far. I, I had some, some questions with myself as well. And I'll, I'll start off. So the, when, when the fire department was attending city stat meetings, what were some of the metrics being used to measure performance?
So in terms, I, I, you're going back to your city state stat days, I think. Yeah, but really what we did for the most part was went call volume month over month. We went through response times, how are response times doing? One of the metrics you didn't go over that I'm gonna get into today is hospital offload is a huge problem we're having right now. The pandemics did a lot with us with that topic. Um, Chief Ford, you might have to help me out. I'm trying to fix some additional performance metrics to the EMS did. We did some EMS billing data, which was our collection, um, percentages and how we were doing with revenue estimates. They also asked how we were doing with outreach and community CPR and our quality assurance, how we were doing with regard to, at the time, we were doing QA reporting by hand. So now we have a, a electronic component that actually screens all of our reports. So it's kind of a, a new point for us to be able to really screen that data. Uh, Chief Ford, I don't know if I missed any other topics off the top of my head, but I, I, that's the one that's come to mind.
That's what I'm looking at right now. It looks like you test just about everything too. Yep. If I see anything, I'm going, I'll go back further in, in previous years, but I don't see anything at this time.
Sure, sure.
That you missed.
Thank you.
Got it. And um, si- since, um, I know we haven't, we haven't been holding city stat meetings. We haven't started those back up through the mayor's office yet, have we?
Not yet. And there is one more thing, EMS hiring.
EMS what, sir?
Hiring.
Oh, hiring, okay. Recruitment, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and have we, have we, since, since we stopped, have, have we been holding internal stat meetings? I know one of, one of the things, uh, agencies had been doing and I know fire, the fire department was, was really good at this at a point was holding internal stat meetings. Have we held any internal stat meetings?
What we do is we have, we have a, um, meeting every month, well, now it's every Tuesday, that we cover all the relevant matrix, metric data in order to, um, to, to make sure we're up on current events and even historic events. So for all practical purposes, yes.
And how are we using data in those, in those meetings now? To make original decisions and change how we, um,
Yeah, because, because, and what made us do it on a weekly basis is because of COVID and, and the challenges that we have, even bringing in the third-party ambulance organization. So we could be, uh, we, we're, one of the things we're doing is so we can be more agile in, in our responses and navigating around our circumstances. We can make a change on a dime because we meet so often.
Chief, the, the data-driven decision-making is tries most of what EMS does. Everything we do, we do currently is based on patient outcomes and data-driven decision-makings. It's one of the premier things we're pushing forward with our five-year plan, is to not just do stuff on impulse, but to do stuff on what we can prove through time. It's real, real important, especially right now, um, with the problems we're having with off, hospital offload. You know, it, it's surprising to look at our call volumes. Our call volumes are relatively flat around the region. The problem that we're having on the backend where it seems we're so slow is that we're not able to get people out of the hospital. And I'm gonna talk about that again in a few minutes, but that's one of the things we're really trending and looking at very closely, as well as with the state. The MIMS, our governing body, actually sends weekly emails to track where this is and I'll share some of that data a little bit later with you.
And, and Councilman Conway, part of, part of what Chief Matts is gonna go into as far as what was driven by us developing a, a living document, and I use the word living for five-year plan, is because the metrics that we deal with on a week-by-week basis, month-by-month, even year-by-year basis may make us change directions based on circumstances. So part, so a lot of what he's going to introduce to you as he talks comes from, um, is, is, is basically coming directly from those meetings that we have. Go ahead, Chief Matts.
Chairman Conway, do you have any other questions or do you want to proceed, sir?
Uh, I wanna give, uh, council members an opportunity to ask questions as well. Let's see everyone at the moment. But if you have questions, please use the raise hand function or speak up.
I, I do, Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Burnett.
Um, thank you. Um, so, uh, two, two quick questions. The first, uh, and I know, um, it relates to, uh, I know you, you listed at the top ten neighborhoods. Remember a few years ago, there was conversation about, um, a, a new initiative at the time to try and divert certain types of calls. Uh, I know that there was, um, and, and I vaguely remember the conversation, but I, I know that it sort of focused on like repeat, like there's being a segment of people who repeatedly call nine-one-one for transport. Um, and, and sometimes it may not necessarily be that they need that particular transport. Maybe they, you know, need additional assistance. You know, connecting with their primary care physician or getting, you know, uh, medical advice over the phone, like just sort of a, 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 alternate dispatch is not the right word, but, and we haven't talked about this in a number of years, but I just wanted to see, is that initiative, one, if you could remind me what it's called, if it's still going and how it's impacting your high vol, high-volume call areas, uh, if, if at all.
So that's, that's a long answer, long question, but, but the long and the short of it is, I'm gonna cover some of it a little bit later, but a lot of these initiatives are surrounding, everything in EMS is heading towards a direction and be honest with you, in hospital and the healthcare system is heading towards population health. It's a huge umbrella, but underneath that umbrella is a lot of different initiatives. Just like nurses in the U C C, alternative destination, alternative transport. People are getting treated and released, um, on the street free of charge is one of the, some of the other options. Do we need to take everybody to the emergency room to answer? No. Can they go to an urgent care? Can they go to the stabilization center? You know, can they go to, in the future, and by the way, these aren't here now, is maybe low-acuity behavioral health emergency beds. That's some of the things we're working on right now. We are working that. The super user program, um, the real problem we have with the super user without getting too much time in.
That's what it was called. Yeah, I was like.
Or, or, you know, loyal customer, whatever you wanna call it, but the problem we had when we initially did that in that, that program was the first year or so was really easy. Um, we had the same people calling from the same address. So you know that Ms. Jones lived the one, two, three, any street and she suffered from diabetes. So in the first year or two, we targeted, you know, Ms. Jones on that street and we were able to correct her problems. The problem was our population is evolving, just like everything else in medicine. Our, our population in the city is evolving. The, the super users have actually transitioned to be primarily substance abusing and homeless population. That's a really difficult group to address. One, I had. One, I had, how do you find them? How do you address them? We tried to follow them around the best we did. So what we actually did is we kind of stratified our target. We tried to target lower hanging fruit, like people that we know we could, could target in in a fixed address, that we could try to go and assist them with some of their needs. Now, one of the questions they asked me to talk about today, and I'm going to get into it a little bit, was to do a deep dive in what drives health disparities. Um, I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes. That's called the social determinants of health. Um, and I have a pretty good graphic on to kind of answer some of the questions. Look, health is only, your healthcare is only ten percent of what drives you as a person. And that's kind of where we're trying to target those other things. When you can address some of those other needs, then we can go ahead and try to, you know, help the person as a whole. Is there a magic bullet that's going to fix any of this and any of this? The answer is no. If we threw fifty ambulances at the problem, if we threw all the people in the world, the answer is we're going to have to check a multifaceted approach to be able to do ten percent here, a few percent here, a few percent there. And I think when we couple all those together, I think we'll be able to make an impact. Um, so I I hope that kind of answered your question there, Councilmember Burnett.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll hold off on my second question for you to get to those set of slides, because that was. So I'll 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 sit back and wait for that uh, part of the presentation.
And Councilman, I have a lot of the very same questions, so I I I'm going to hold off on mine as well. Any other questions from the committee before um, Chief Matts continues? All right, I don't see any hands up, so we, you can move on. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So just to go back to where I'm at, what we did was the averages over the last three fiscal years. And the average incidents this year, uh, last fiscal year, four hundred and twenty-seven. FY twenty, they were four oh seven, and in nineteen, they were four thirty-three. You got to remember in twenty, you're talking COVID. COVID had a huge impact on a lot of stuff. A lot of people were afraid to go to the hospital, leave their homes. So twenty is kind of a scratch. I think you have a better gauge when you look back at nineteen, and that's what I try to look at. And we're only owing off about six calls on average there. But I will tell you, as a whole around the country, EMS call volume is going down slightly around the, around the country because of those very reasons. Um, the other thing that we wanted to talk about was the top five advanced life support, which are the paramedic-driven units. That's what these are. Um, we use call determinants. When we do, when people call in, they're given a call determinant from our nine-one-one center. The five most common advanced life support um, calls for service are basically difficulty speaking between sentences or difficulty breathing. Um, thirty-one, uh, DO two is an overdose or unconscious. That accounts for four thousand three hundred seventy-one incidents. I'm sorry, difficulty speaking or um, breathing is seven thousand six hundred nineteen, as you can see. Um, the next two actually have to do with overdose. Uh, the thirty-one D three is an overdose changing color, which is twenty-three hundred ninety-three uh, incidents. The next is overdose cardiac arrest, which is about uh, two thousand two hundred and forty-six. And then lastly is our ten delta two, which is chest pain, difficulty speaking. Uh, Councilman Burnett, to kind of take, step back into what you were talking about a little bit. What we're doing, and one of the things we're going to talk about later, is these low-acuity calls, low priority. I don't know if acuity is comfortable, low priority, the lowest threshold to call. For us in Baltimore, and it's been the same thing over the last several years, our most common call determinant is a twenty-six card, they call it, which essentially is sick. The twenty-six card is a sick card. So twenty-six alpha ten is unwell ill. Twenty-six alpha one is a sick, no priority symptoms. It just means you may be sick to your stomach or something. Twenty-six alpha two is an abdominal uh, abnormal blood pressure asymptomatic symptoms. Twenty-six alpha eleven is vomiting, which counts for fifteen hundred thirteen calls. And then last is twenty-six Bravo one, which is a six unknown reason. Um, that's kind of a general category. I got to be honest with you. If we count the number of of these calls to go out a year, it's quite a few. Our alpha and Bravo, and if you look at the second letter on the call determinant, the twenty-six A, twenty-six A, that's your alpha or your lowest level. Last year, our alpha and Bravo calls, we did forty-six thousand calls, roughly a third of our calls of service were low-acuity calls, and they're some of those calls we're trying to target. Um, average EMS response time, I know you asked us to to put those up, and what I did was we broke, I didn't do it. I'm going to give credit to um, our IT department, but they did total average response time, medic average response time, and then ambulances, of course, are basic life support units. We averaged nine minutes and fifty-one seconds. Uh, total medic average response time for fiscal year twenty-one was nine minutes and thirty-eight seconds. And AMBO average response time was uh, ten minutes and sixteen seconds. The other thing they wanted to do was talk about the suppression side with regard to EMS. The suppression response time to EMS call averages, and for your purposes, and I know these, if they haven't, would be more than happy to email these presentations to the members of the city council on this today. Um, I put the definitions below them so you can see them. But essentially, the suppression response time to an EMS response averages six minutes and three seconds. And their average wait time for an EMS unit is eight minutes and twenty-six, six seconds. Bearing in mind um, that the um, suppression unit does have at least basic life support providers on them. And in some cases, they have advanced life support providers that can provide initial care or first response. They also asked us to talk about unit. Um, we use UHU, it's called. It's unit hour utilization. It's a metric that EMS systems use to check how busy are their systems. But Baltimore's EMS overall UHU is fifty-one percent. It's a little bit better than the last time I looked at it, because the last time it was close to sixty. Um, the medics' average UHU is fifty percent, and the AMBOs are fifty-two percent of every hour they're running. Just to give you some reference, um, nationally from the American Ambulance Association, what they're trying to do is to target a UHU of between point two-five and point three. So we're up that, or they're trying to say twenty-five percent or thirty percent of every hour you should be actively working. And then the ambulance associated with America's eyes, the other three-quarters of that hour, you should be, you know, writing reports, preparing for the next response, eating, taking care of yourself, that kind of thing.
Chief Matts?
Yes, sir.
Could you explain to them the difference between a medic and an AMBO, please?
A medic unit is a a paramedic or advanced life support unit. They have the capabilities to do the advanced functions, using cardiac monitors, helping people to breathe and certain tubes to breathe for people. They're the ones that do the advanced level uh, of medicine that we provide. Ambulances are are manned by EMTs, and they provide basic life support, which is essentially banditing, bleeding, splinting, lower acuity things that you that we have to take people to the hospital for.
Yeah, we we um, Chairman and council members, we went to this two-tier system, this split system, approximately five, a little bit better than five years ago, six years ago, maybe, in order to leverage uh, our resources and add additional medic units. That's when you'll hear Chief Matts talk about how we added additional medic units. That's how we did it, was having all ALS response force to breaking it into having also BLS response force.
So one of the other questions was the EMS fleet itself, just for for uh, references. We have twenty-eight first-line units um, that we use every day or a combination of ALS and BLS. We have four critical units, and then we have up to four peak-time units that are staffed daily based upon availability or overtime. So if we have, you know, uh, eight people available for overtime on this day, we'll staff four. If there's only um, six, we'll staff three. Um, they had asked about some of the fleet um, statistical statistics, and unfortunately, they're generated by DGS and fleet maintenance, and we're not going to be able to get ahold of those today. But for for our purposes of this presentation, um, they asked me to let them know that when a first-line unit goes out of service, their second-line unit's available to fill those places. At this point, I'm going to convert over to the social determinants of health and the health background and what we're doing to address those needs. Is there any questions? Yes, sir.
I want to, I want to open it up to question some folks if they have uh, any questions on that that last segment. Um, so uh, to that end, any, any folks on the committee have any questions about that last segment? I can't see you all, um, so if I'm missing you, please feel free to speak up.
And Mr. Chairman, we do have Chief Case on the line who is over our um, over our community risk reduction logistics, so he's over all the fleet as well, so he can answer any questions about new apparatuses or anything we're getting in as well.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any questions. Um, said that, and you can uh, continue, Chief Matts. Go ahead.
Great. So, thank you, Chairman. So so to kind of what I alluded to earlier, a lot of people say, what defines health? Healthcare only defines ten percent of who we are as a whole. There's a lot of factors that are involved in health and healthcare. Our health is basically thirty percent based on genetics, individual behavior, like do you smoke, do you work out, this accounts for forty. And then there are these outliers, these social and economic factors. One of, what they're called is the social determinants of health. Um, the social determinants of health are an individual's personal circumstances that impact their health and well-being. And they include every, include political, socioeconomic, cultural factors, along with how easily someone can access healthcare, education, a safe place to live, and nutritious food. Um, this is a really good graphic that kind of breaks that down. If you're not eating well and you're eating fast food non-stop, it's going to have a secondary effect of you're going to be overweight. If you don't work out, you're going to have, be be predisposed to have additional um, health issues. Uh, Dr. Lawner, did, did you want to speak for a moment on the social determinants of health? You're much more of an expert than I am.
Um, thank you, Chief Matts. I would only add that the um, you know, historically, fire departments, and we don't certainly live in a um, a vacuum. Um, we experience many of the challenges that other urban uh, public service agencies also experience. Um, I think what distinguishes Baltimore as a unique city um, is that the social determinants of health um, are something that the fire department obviously has to understand because they affect our patients' um, access to nine-one-one. So for example, as you all will know, if there is a high burden of substance use and undomiciled patients in your catchment area, this is going to disproportionately affect the nine-one-one we call. So um, I I think it's very important to kind of appreciate the fact that, you know, historically, nine-one-one is always, it 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 assumes that everyone has an emergency. The nine-one-one determinants assume that um, everyone that is calling uh, has a life threat. And I think it is very clear, abundantly clear as a matter of fact, that uh, nine-one-one is the catchment area for not only the life threats, but for people that um, for various reasons, um, don't have immediate access to healthcare, whether that's healthcare literacy, whether that's any of the factors that um, Chief Matts has outlined on the social determinant slide. So I think it is an added challenge because you have the busyness of our urban system that runs a hundred and eighty-five thousand EMS requests per year um, that I I think we, we experience the draw uh, and the burden of, I think, some of these social determinants of health, which which affect our population, as as you might imagine, which is reflected in the neighborhood utilization and also in the call volume.
Thank you, Dr. Lawner. So what did we find when we look at health disparities? The Affordable Care Act required all area hospitals to perform something, it's the acronym, they call it a CHINA. It stands for the Community Health Needs Assessment. A few years ago, I, we actually had uh, one of our um, master students come in. I had him to compare and contrast the Community Health Needs Assessment across Baltimore from all the area hospitals, as well as what the health department itself had had put out. And what we found in there are these seven common areas are very common to the disparities that that we have in Baltimore. One of those is a lack of access to healthcare, poor individual literacy, as Dr. Lawner had said, high unemployment, low median income, high HIV rates, excessive tobacco use, and lack of transportation. What what do those health disparities do? They lead to these instances because of the weaknesses in the primary care infrastructure. We have extreme use or high use of EMS responses and ED usage. Dr. Lawner, you want to talk about the complexity of the patients? Uh, that's your expertise.
Absolutely. So first and foremost, I'm also a practicing uh, clinician. I I work in an emergency department and also um, uh, on the um, the first response tier with the, the ambulances as well. And not only do we have things, as we talked about, the substance use and the high uh, burden of chronic disease, but we also have significant comorbidities. Um, our patient population, for example, there's a significant percentage of chronic disease such as diabetes, hypertension, that's also superimposed upon things such as transplanted organs. So you can imagine that if you have some challenges accessing healthcare, and you've got comorbidities, and you've got lack of access, and there's lack of transportation, the individual burden of disease coupled with the volume places a significant strain on resources. And I think this is felt by um, every person that kind of touches the emergency healthcare umbrella. Um, as a matter of fact, I I would, I would echo what Chief Matt says in the previous slide. Uh, just published in twenty twenty-one, um, we did an analysis of our mobile integrated healthcare teams, and it basically showed uh, many of the factors that you're outlining here. That it's not just the fact that we have a lot of people, and and there are, this is a very highly acute uh, EMS system. It's not only the fact that patients are calling with immediate life threats, but um, these um, requests for assistance uh, come up against uh, a significant burdens, which are related to the substance use, the lack of access, the lack of education. So it's a very, I I think it's safe to say it's a very sick population, and and you could imagine that has this a lot of significant downstream effect. Um, it is very difficult, for example, to sort this out on the front end. So um, it is a challenge, for example, to look at diversion when you're trying to divert somebody with these significant comorbidities to a place that is uh, not an emergency department. So it all factors into what we're seeing right now, which is where we still have, despite a bunch of initiatives, a significant um, percentage of our population that accesses nine-one-one to go to a hospital. And so I I think that's a good kind of uh, background with which to understand the challenges um, where we deliver our care.
And as as Dr. Lawner had pointed out, we are a very busy EMS system. Um, there's, there's surveys and studies done on a regular basis around the country to, who is the busiest and who's this? Baltimore City historically places one, two, or three in terms of how busy we are. This uh, survey that was conducted by a prestigious group called the Eagles, which is the top sixty or seventy jurisdictions in the United States. Um, and this is actually EMS responses per one thousand of the population. Baltimore is firmly at number one at three hundred and thirteen responses per one thousand of population. We're followed by Cleveland, St. Louis, Washington DC, and Buffalo, some very busy systems themselves. And to be fair, these top five, they they jump around. I know in the one study where they did per capita, um, which is you divide the calls by number of units, we come in like third or second. So they jump all around, but the long and the short of it is we're a very busy system for the very, very reasons we just out, we just outlined. One of the other things, and I kind of talked about it earlier, this this topic of ambulance offload is getting to be a a critical problem. There's a lot of reasons for ambulance off, ambulance offload delay. I'm going to start with the first, and the first is going to definitely be COVID. COVID caused a lot of problems for us in terms of offload. One of the other problems with with COVID nineteen and the pandemic, it cut off the feeder pools. It cut off the the feeder pools of paramedics coming into the system, EMTs coming into the system, doctors that are able to ride along, nurses that were able to ride along, so bas- basically it made a personnel shortfall. Um, some of the other problems that we're having with the hospitals as well, the way the hospitals are designed, and uh, they're paid through a group called the Health Service Cost Review Commission. Basically, when they started with the the global-based budget payment model for Maryland, it's very unique to Maryland. Hospitals are penalized if they readmit a patient through the ED or to the hospital. Because of that, hospitals tend to park or board people in the ED. And what that does is that causes a trickle-down effect on my end with the ambulances being able to get in and out of there. And and the problem is it's really starting to present itself to be quite a problem around. It's a national problem, a regional problem, and and a local problem. Um, we average, and we're lucky in terms of the average, we averaged forty-seven minutes last week. And and these are old, but I I have the actual numbers right here in front of me. Region three last week, it was also at fifty-eight minutes on average. They use ninetieth percentile or ninety percent of the units offload is the number that we're using. Um, last week, region three alone, nine percent of the patients that came into a hospital in this region, that's like Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, took over an hour to go to the, to the uh, waiting room, which last week, that was four hundred and fifty patients took over an hour. Um, last week, and these numbers are actually low, the numbers from last year agree even worse, our two worst defending hospitals with offload were at seventy-eight minutes for the one, number one, and the second was at sixty-three minutes. So every time we go in those hospitals, we're having a challenge to get our people out. Um, so that's causing one of the problems. One of the positives I want to highlight on the fire department itself, we initiated a a program, oh, probably twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, I think it's two thousand twelve, called the Medical Duty Officer. Essentially, what we do in Baltimore, we have an air traffic controller that basically helps to maneuver and move um, ambulances to to less busy hospitals around the area. So they call in, if they find that one hospital is overcrowded, like in this, this is traffic, um, we're able to move those around. If we did not have the MDO, and at this point, our hospital offloads would be even worse. What we probably have with the MDO is the same problem we have at this time. We have a problem seeing the hospitals on the, the fringe of the city. The problem with like Dave View or St. Agnes is we share those hospitals with Baltimore County, Howard County. So what happens is I might see how many people I have in there, but if you look in this slide, there's Baltimore County, Baltimore City, and all these different people in there. What happens is when we get in there, we can't get our people out. Um, we're also using some some uh, uh, strong uh, programs to try to offload some of this. One of the other problems that we're having to help um, to work with hospital offload, just this week, we started an initiative called directed triage. Basically, we we have a flow sheet, I don't have a diagram up that even show you, but if patients come in and they present with certain factors and they meet certain criteria, they go right into the waiting room like everybody else. Basically, we never meet, meet the the normal entrance way through the ambulance. Anarona County did it last fiscal year, and they noted a fifty percent reduction in time of patients when they did directed triage. Um, we just started this Monday. It looks like we're having pretty good usage of it, but I got to be honest with you. I'm just putting the metrics, you know, to be able to pull the report um, from our our patient care reporting system. I'll have better report for you next time, but it is doing a lot of success with that. Um, so.
Just add, Chief Matts, that um, with respect to this hospital offload, and and I think this dovetails nicely into the remainder of this presentation, is that um, it it proverbially does take a village. I mean, I, it it is very painful for me to walk into work, that the situation at our hospitals right now, I mean, although this is a hospital problem, uh, there are regularly over twenty-five orders in the emergency department plus admitted patients. So the challenge is that, yes, we need to leverage our hospitals in order to offload and facilitate offload, but against the backdrop of COVID and staffing, there is not a lot of capacity. So this underscores the urgency of a problem that has predated COVID, which is namely, how does nine-one-one transition? So this underscores the urgency of a problem that has predated COVID, which is namely, how does 911 transition from an agency that takes was reported emergent complaints to a hospital to one that actually understands what the patient's need is, whether that's a combination of social determinants of health or transportation, to better fill the needs of the population because there is no one, as you said, Chief Matt's earlier, there's no one silver bullet. It takes a very coordinated strategy of medically informed dispatch, pre-911 strategies, and also a very flexible sort of response model. So I apologize for interrupting, I was just providing additional context for the offload.
It's okay, Dr. Lawner, I appreciate it.
Dr. Lawner, I'm going to follow you. Chief Matt, I want to dovetail off Dr. Lawner's statement. Before we go further, I want to make sure that you all are aware that Dr. Lawner and Chief Matt meet often with the community of leadership in those hospitals to try to figure out ways to better serve and better not just deal with their circumstances, but help us with ours. So it's, we're not in a vacuum, neither one of us, we're trying to work together and work through this.
Thank you, Chief, and that's true. You're going to get more with honey than you do fighting with people. We're trying to work with them. At a certain point, I have to get a little firm with some of them, but we're doing our best to work with them and try to collaborate on some resolutions. One of the things that I spoke about earlier was this whole topic of population health and all these different initiatives. Population health is going to have a positive impact. These different programs, EMS population health programs, are going to have a positive impact on our social determinants of health. They're going to reduce our EMS call volume. They're going to lead to better patient outcomes. Let's face it, if a patient's not sitting on a stretcher for an hour, an hour and a half to get into bed, they're going to have a better outcome, especially if I have to replace the patient to another hospital. And we're going to have improved response times. The trickle down to this is we're going to have better response times. So I like to call this the EMS circle of life. I can't take your credit for this, you can see that, right, Chief? Give me a thumbs up because my computer was acting up. Okay, good. We call this the EMS call circle of life, and this is basically leads to those populations of EMS programs. Basically, the idea of these programs going forward, and this is nothing new, this is going on around the region, around the state, and around the country, but we're trying to match the right patient with the right resource. What we want to do is walk through some of the things that we're doing right now to be proactive. And like we talked about earlier, there's no one thing that's going to fix this. We need multiple things working together to try to chip away at the problem. We're going to take you from the initiation of the call from the 911 center through the response, the actual treatment of the patient, through transport to the hospital, and then on the back end, the mitigation. What are we doing on the back end? You know, an EMS program, I will tell you that EMS, as you know it for now, is really dead. We really have to modify and we have to evolve with what's happening in the forefront of EMS at this time. We need to have a system that's a multipurpose, adaptable and versatile, that's able to adapt to the right patient with the right resource. The first part of this is the 911 part, and I got to be honest with you, Dr. Lawner is very important in this. He's actually working right now in the diversion programs with behavioral diversion that we're doing, and it's a slow challenge. Dr. Ben, I'll let go ahead and ask to serve you, Dr. Lawner.
I know we've had the pleasure of speaking to many of you about this, and certainly the overall goal here is meeting the patient needs. So I'll try to hit the salient points and move on with expediency here. So basically, when people call 911, you know, the end result, of course, as we mentioned, is the dispatch of an ambulance. I think we need to look at a system that actually tries to identify the patient need or the caller need and then match the appropriate resource. So we're working on a lot of these sort of separately. There is a behavioral health diversion program that Chief Matt has mentioned that would like to expand into where we actually, if we can identify the need that's specific, meaning somebody needs a medication refill, we can link to their services. And I would call your attention to a program just to the south in DC where there is a nurse line that is contracted, their model is a little bit different. They have a 24/7 medically supervised model where they identify the lower acuity calls. The end result of this was it took about 7,000 calls off the table for 911 in the first year. So part of the solution, as much as I hate to say, given my clinical work, is to not take people to the hospital, but we want to make sure that we don't leave people without care. And part and parcel with that is also understanding the dispatch. As we showed you earlier, all of the call determinants assume that somebody is having an emergency and we try to backwardly sort of engineer it and come up with a sensible determinant. What a 911, a medically informed dispatch model does is sort of like what we've seen across the pond, as our colleagues in England would say, is you have essentially a clinician embedded in the 911 sister, the 911 center, as opposed to a call taker. Right now, we have 911 specialists that receive a certain amount of training in the classification of calls. The, one of the models that actually helps with diversion is embedding a clinician in 911. You can do the more granular triage. And so this reflects some of the current and future state at the time the call is received in the 911 dispatch center.
So and as Dr. Ben, as Dr. Lawner had said earlier, by doing those medically informed decisions, what that leads to is our actual response. Do we need an ambulance to go to every response every time? The answer is no. Can we do those responses with the appropriate basic life support unit? Or if it's appropriate, an advanced life support unit? Can we potentially send a commercial service, a contracted service, to take a low acuity patient to the right resource? Can we go and send an Uber or a Lyft to take a patient to an urgent care center? The answer is yes, alternate transport is one of those options. The other part to talk about a little bit on this slide is provider referral. Where actively we have a treat and release unit in the West Baltimore catchment through our mobile integrated healthcare program. Basically, if they're working and a provider on the scene identifies a patient that's appropriate to be treated, they can refer to that unit and to be able to offer that treatment. Now, to just go a step further, I am in discussions with Johns Hopkins. It's kind of unfair that we're currently just doing this in West Baltimore. Unfortunately, that's where it was funded to. Johns Hopkins is extremely excited to work with us in the near future and bringing that to East Baltimore in the next year. And then in year three, which is one of our programs and one of our projections, we want to try to take this to the entire city of Baltimore. Oh, and then of course, not to miss this, we need some additional units. But as I had said earlier, the additional need for units is not the only answer. Like Chief Ford had said, back in 2015, we added 12 additional units to the fleet. All that happened when we added those 12 additional units is it momentarily leveled out our call volume, but within the first, I would say, six months, our call volume started to rise to meet the number of units. What it takes is a multifaceted approach to address that problem. Treatment, as I'd said before, it's great if we can go out and treat and release people and never have to take them to the hospital. This saves us time on the end with every call. Currently, what we're doing is our treat and release unit is co-dispatched to a low acuity call. If the patient agrees to be treated and released free of charge, our EMS resources are released. What does that do? That saves time downstream in the system. And all those little 30 and 40 minutes start to add up and make it so that we can respond in a more efficient way to our patients and calls for service. And then lastly, as I had said before, provider referral, once again. If a provider on the street identifies a patient that's appropriate, we can go ahead and transition that patient over to that. Transport to the hospital is the big piece that we really need to talk about. Do we need to take a patient by ambulance at all times? The answer is no. Can we safely transfer patients by wheelchair van, by multi-person driven van? Yes. Can we safely transport low acuity or low priority patients to the hospital using taxi, Uber, or Lyft? The answer is yes. Of course, we'll always have our two-tier, which is our advanced life support and our basic life support units. Lastly, we need to actively look at contracting with commercial units to do our low acuity calls, like they're doing in DC and areas around us, to try to shave off some of that lower priority and lower acuity call volume. The last part, and Dr. Lawner, I'll defer to you on this, is the mitigation strategy on the back end. Is this outreach component?
Sure. So I think we're seeing, obviously, the end reality is going to be when all of these kind of systems work together. If you consider, for example, the last slide, we talked about transport. We also don't want to transport somebody to a place that is, you know, in isolation. A lot of patients have medical homes. And so ideally, in a fully kind of resourced transport model, you have a health information exchange, you have a reliable appointment system, so you connect people back into the healthcare model. So we've identified through mobile integrated health and our population health that our patients certainly have a lot of chronic healthcare needs. Now, to be quite frank, I'm not sure how much of these are going to be able to be met by a fire department, but there is a lot of information and a lot of collaboration to be realized when we work with our partners in the health department. One thing that COVID impacted very negatively, for example, was community CPR classes. I think that is a great way in which we can increase literacy with respect to first aid measures, community health classes based upon some of the disparities that we see. So collaborating with the health department, I think there's a lot of harm reduction opportunities when we look at opioid harm reduction strategies and so forth. So we put this slide in there to indicate that we, again, don't operate in isolation. And in order to prevent the 911 call and the crisis from happening in the first place, we have to take advantage of our resources and we have to take advantage of agencies that meet our patients where they live. And that's further collaboration with our area hospitals, Department of Health, and other city agencies that we can make sure that people are plugged in appropriately to the resources.
And the only thing I would add behind Dr. Lawner at this point is it says vaccination and mobile integrated healthcare. We are actively partnering with our health department partners, as well as through MIH, to vaccinate our homebound of vulnerable populations. We've been actively doing that. The problem is that's a slow process, you can understand with the time and the temperature deadlines. We're only able to do about 10 people at a time, but we're making a little bit of headway in that area. One of the other slides we want to include was to kind of give the council a gauge on what we're doing right now and where we're heading in the future. Dr. Lawner, I'll defer to you and then I'll add as soon as you finish with this piece.
So I also don't want to paint the impression that this is just a reactive sort of understanding and a reactive strategy to this healthcare crisis. I think the fire department, under Chief Ford, Chief Matt, Chief Sevella's leadership, Chief Pace, we have been able to adopt sort of strategies that look at a couple of these needs. So where are we now? And we do a lot of these things. I know it's been very public, we've been able to partner with the GBRICS council where we're able to at least introduce behavioral health diversion into 911, which is something that is very, I think, it makes so much sense, but it's very cutting edge for 911 dispatch situations. And the last time we actually went through the data, there were, I believe, over 450 calls that we were able to include into that program. So all of these things add up. We also have alternative destination programs now. We have a stabilization center, but right now it's on the west side of Baltimore. It's only 30 beds, it's off in at capacity. That's something that we do, but I think could grow when you have a connected system that looks at dispatch and transport operations. We just implemented direct to triage this week, which I think is targeted at our ambulance offload situation and the increasing ambulance offload delays that not only this jurisdiction, but every jurisdiction encounters. And then the more medical ability and the more informed medical knowledge we have and we push upfront to our 911 call specialists, I think the better able we will be to route patients throughout the system. So currently, we do have limited opportunities to transport to urgent care. Our hope is that we will engage other healthcare systems, specifically LifeBridge, and as Chief Matt's mentioned, Hopkins, to offer a bunch of options to patients that may not meet the immediate need to go to an emergency department. I think when you look to the right, and I'll just set the stage for a future state, is that the key thing is all these things need to work together. If you have a treat and release unit that just basically sews somebody up, but doesn't connect with the primary care or doesn't look at the substance use issue, we're only going to get these kind of one-offs. And I think what we're looking at is a very coordinated system that looks at a healthcare exchange that partners with our sort of federally qualified healthcare centers that offers a lot of options to our patients along the spectrum of 911 care. So from before the time that the 911 call comes in, we work with partners to sort of anticipate patient needs. When the 911 calls comes in, we are able to effectively triage and sort and dispatch the appropriate resource. And if we have to send a fire department resource, we want to make sure that we are sending the absolutely correct resource. And then I think, and that's either through an ambulance or alternative destination. And underpinning all of this is data-driven healthcare. And I think there was a great discussion, which I could spend probably, I don't know how many hours on, about how we look at this and how we look at metrics. And a big challenge, I think, for the future state is refining all the data stream. So for example, to look at how to track our behavioral healthcare diversion program, we had to look at CRIS. We had to look at, we had to look at a variety of other softwares. We had to look at EMS, we had to look at police. And having the infrastructure to do that, analyze it, make change, I think is going to be deep with sustainable, efficient, and responsive EMS system. So I just wanted to paint the picture that there's a lot of these changes underway. And although there are a lot of challenges, it is, I think, a great time to be where we are because we are a sorely needed system. We provide a very important service, and I think this is about the justification kind of for expansion of EMS. So I would, that's all I have about that slide, Chief Matt's. I know it's a lot.
And Dr. Ben, you are never short on words, so thank you very much. Just to sum up, basically with Dr. Ben and what Dr. Lawner had said and what I had said earlier, there is no one strategy that is going to answer this problem. I think it's going to take multiple strategies working together to be able to solve this problem and to chip away at this problem. The last two slides I have before I go over to the questions, they asked me to put a little piece in here about recruitment. I know you addressed that a lot extremely earlier. I'm just going to share what I have and then go over to questions. We did do the open paramedic and EMT, we continuously posted those positions. They were posted from July 8th, 2021 through October, the 8th of 2021. Some of the sources and outlets that they used for that marketing was the, as you can read, news stations, Afro-American newspaper, Baltimore Sun, MOED, City Hall, all the way down to Baltimore City Fire Department's social media platforms. I will tell you that a class did just come in last week. We just did the welcome, we do a night, Chief Ford goes out and greets the new families of the new recruits. In addition to that, we had a class of 11 just graduate yesterday. And they were really excited to get on the street. Other than that, Chairman Conway, I promise I'll be quiet and I'm open to any questions you may have.
No, this was really, really, really helpful. And I had a number of questions and thoughts as you spoke through each part of this, and I wanted to allow you an opportunity to speak through it all. If you don't mind, can you take down the presentation? All right, I'm going to open the floor up to questions from the committee. I still have a few myself. So my first question, so a couple of thoughts came up initially when you started talking through the top 10 areas, box areas, and neighborhoods. And I'm sure you guys noticed this as well. The areas where we have the most calls for service are not the most populous areas of the city. Of course, they align with exactly the social determinants of health, those issues that we know to be our problems. And then Chief Matt, you said a couple of things that really resonated with me, that substance abuse in the homeless population were a common theme in our high flyers, our frequent flyers. I was sort of curious, what are we, it sounds like it's a multi-faceted approach. I'll preface it with that, it sounds like you guys appreciate that. But what specifically are we doing or what specifically are the best practices there? Are there things that we can do to improve our response or properly tailor our response to the homeless population and for folks struggling with substance abuse, knowing that that's a frequent problem for us?
So, thank you, Chairman. We're actively working with the health department on the opioid intervention task force. And there's a lot of outreach opportunities that we're working with them right now. One of the, we're actually a model for the state of Maryland, believe it or not, with Leave Behind Narcan. We just started sharing that data on the open Baltimore site. We've left to date, I want to say roughly 2,000 of the kits, which equates to two times that in doses. They actually looked at us to do that. We leave up to three kits behind at a time. We're still not fans of leaving it behind with children. We try to keep it with, you know, family members or co-users and that way if there's a problem. There was actually a certain point where one of my lieutenants actually goes through and reviews the reports for the Leave Behind. He actually said that a lot of the reports are starting to comment that patients were treated with Narcan prior to our arrival. It's a lot easier to treat somebody that's coming back from an overdose than somebody that's in cardiac arrest. So to that end, I think that part is successful. Some of the other challenges we're working on with the health department, as well as outreach and partnering with them. We've partnered with their population health and opioid initiatives from some time. They have, they tried to do an outreach program where they have a team that goes out if somebody wants to be seen and seek treatment. The problem we have with that opportunity right now is the fire department travels at such a fast pace. That team being able to catch up to us is a breakdown piece right there. In the future, because they asked me, it's really difficult for us to embed somebody like that in the fire department because we don't just go to overdose calls or people that need treatment. We're also treating people that are medically ill, we're also going to fires and such. I think that's one of those other really good alternatives when you look down the road for mobile integrated healthcare. Where you compare a community paramedic with an outreach or a peer recovery person, they could actually target that address. The way we're addressing that now currently is if somebody is on scene, they say, yes, I want to be, I want to have help. They'll get their most accurate phone number, they can reach them or where they're located right now. They'll call back to our medical duty officer and they internal flag that so that peer recovery group knows. Does it always work? No, we're trying to get better at it. It's just a problem with aligning the two speeds that they travel. Because to be quite honest, the health department is a little bit slower than we do. We're moving back and forth, you know, an overdose. And then when we would bring somebody back from an overdose and if they opt to refuse, that can be as little as 15 minutes. So unless we have these people placed all over the city, it's really tough. We're trying to work through it. So unless we have these people placed all over the city, it's really tough. We're trying to work through it. We're trying to do some different initiatives to help with that area. One of the other areas that we also, I failed to mention, it was substance abuse. It was homelessness and mental health. And a lot of times you're going to have all three of those. You're going to have the combination of all three to go on. I'll let Dr. Loner speak, but you're going to see a trifecta of a lot of that. It's a very tough and challenging thing. We, we try to identify people. We try to, you know, address their individual needs as best we can. We were trying to work with the mayor's office of homeless services. I'm probably calling it the wrong name and I apologize for that. We do work closely with them for some different initiatives, especially with Code Blue coming around right now and different ways we can address that. Dr. Loner, you want to address that as well?
Well, in deference to what you said earlier, I will, I'll be brief. It, it is really difficult. I don't know. And I can tell you, if you have all the resources positioned at the patient's point of care. So let's say you have a patient substance use, they're, they're not in the pre-contemplative state. They're ready to receive counseling. They're in the emergency department. No matter what you do, 30% of them are going to have experience of recidivism. So we're combating something that is so difficult that not even a fully resourced emergency department or hospital can deal with it. We have data on, in my tenure as the deputy medical director, we worked with the latter, we worked with Hopkins, the lighthouse study. We actually did a very focused outreach sort of paradigm where we paired specialty trained paramedics. And unfortunately we were, we're still not able to meet this increased demand. I think if you are looking for a sustainable strategy for substance use, it is one that is collaborative. It is one that actually deals with what's called an expert model, which is I think a sustained brief intervention and treatment, which is kind of up in the alley of EMS providers, but you have to train them to do that, which is of course challenging when you have calls pending all of the time. And then the other component of this, the, the one part of the substance use mitigation strategy that works in the emergency healthcare realm is really having a fully incentivized mobile integrated health population health vision. Because what we're finding is a lot of these patients, as you mentioned earlier, are the same. So when we can kind of coordinate strategies, make sure they have access, make sure they have access to counseling outpatient rehab. And we address the behavioral health issues, we start to drive those numbers down, but it is exceedingly challenging to deal with that, you might imagine for an overdose, because a lot of those patients are what we call pre-contemplative. You give them naloxone, we mitigate the loss of life and they are not even there to sign a refusal of care. So I, I don't want to underestimate that challenge, but also outline a couple of strategies that we have been doing for our patients that are in need of, of substance use assistance.
And then to, to talk about the elephant in the room, the homelessness aspect, I, I got to be quite honest with you. Unless we have available housing, that's really the problem of the day. I will tell you next week, we're, we're meeting with, they're calling it the Integrated Complex Care at Home Initiative. So it's one of the newer initiatives, Chief Ford, and, and we're going to be meeting with them. I believe they're looking at some housing, but I, I might be premature to talk about it until I have a meeting with them. But honestly, that's the answer of the day. I mean, there's some, I know in Milwaukee and there's another city I'm missing. They actually use some of their money to provide housing for some of their. What was it?
Oh, Utah, Salt Lake City. I mean, it's housing first. Totally agree.
I mean, that's something to look at, bigger scale planning, going down the road, I would say we'd need to look at as well. And once again, it's, it's going to be multiple approaches.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate all those things. Hearing this conversation makes me think it would be worth bringing in the health department to this next hearing and probably homeless services as well. To have a more in-depth conversation about those key pieces. I'm, I'm really curious how we deal with folks who are having a mental health crisis. You know, when we get those repeated calls and I don't know what those calls look like and, and what that flag is for you to identify it as a mental health issue. How do we deal with that? What do we do? How do we help people? I mean, do we just drop them off at a hospital? Is that the only, I'm asking a lot of questions. I don't know if you have the answers to them. But I hope we can figure it out next time on PSGO. No. You know, there, there's a lot here. And I think this is what you guys are struggling with. So.
One of the first pieces is, is like what Dr. Loner is working on right now. There, there's a problem to be able to identify a low acuity behavioral health person, somebody that's not dangerous. One of the programs they're doing is they're sending in B C R I, which is a, a, a contract of, of mental health professionals that go in. The problem is if somebody's truly dangerous, we don't want to send them in there because they could potentially get hurt. That, that behavioral call diversion, they're, they're not sending fire or police to those calls to try to reduce some of the things that they ask from the consent decree and such. We're also, what we're also finding and one of the biggest challenges and, and Dr. Loner sits on that, that group, they actually have to evaluate every call that comes in and they have to look at, not only did they do the right thing, did the patient just have behavioral, you know, mental health issues? Or did the patient also have diabetes that he wasn't being treated for, you know, heart issues going on, some kind, you know, there's all kinds of different things that were going in there. And we're trying to identify those as well. We're trying to work our way through those. But at the end of the day, we do have to take those people to the hospital. If that's what it comes down to, we're going to have to transport them.
Yeah, I, I don't want, I also don't want our esteemed council to hear that sometimes there's nothing we can do. I mean, the default is to transport to the hospital, the ED's overburdened and everybody would agree that the ED's are not a place. The challenge is that we make a request for a patient for a medical scrutiny exam. And that means we have to present them for what's called clearance. Even emergency psychiatrists won't, won't deal with patients unless they're assured that the medical issues have been mitigated. And this is a huge challenge, as you might imagine, to deal with at dispatch because our patients have that triple axis, right? There's behavioral health, there's substance use, and there's also homelessness and all the physical comorbidities. So in light of those challenges, I, I can say in direct answer to your question, one is we are identifying those patients and connecting them with a B C R I, which is the contracted provider, and they're expanding. We are working in lockstep with them. Number two is if the call, if it's not somebody who's dangerous, violent, we have an opportunity to send a mobile healthcare crisis team out. And this is basically the product of the work with B C R I, the GBRICS council. Now, number three is obviously taking them to the hospital, but there's a lot of emergency psychiatric stuff on the backend that we can do. And that's where we really need to plug in our hospitals and our outpatient intensive psychiatric ambulatory care providers. I would just say you can appreciate this is a very difficult lift for EMS agencies who are primarily tasked with paramedics as how do I fix a heart attack? So we are dealing with a number of those things at once, but I think the saving grace here is that there's a lot of visibility on this issue. And there are a lot of current strategies that we are doing in conjunction with our stakeholders and B C R I and behavioral health systems Baltimore to address some of the behavioral health contingencies.
All right. I've asked a lot of questions. I want to give my colleagues some questions. Folks, any, Councilman Ramos, yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks colleagues. I know you've done a lot of work on this. When we had our briefing, one of the things that came up was around this issue of, you know, obviously we, the emergency rooms are swollen and there's, you know, you have to find a way to get people to care. So that's what you're doing. And I understand that you're working with the hospitals, but it seems to me that we, we also had a conversation about the ACA and the fact that some of, you're feeling like some of the hospitals are keeping people in emergency rooms so that they're not admitting those people on the third try and then getting dinged with their Medicaid reimbursement. And to me, that is the issue, if indeed that's what's happening. And I think we need to work on that and not just try to triage people who then would go to other types of care. And hopefully we'll be able to work with the, the hospitals. So is that still something that you're thinking about and want to work on?
So hospitals are fined if they readmit, the, the readmission penalty, Dr. Loner, help me. I want to say a, a single instance of hospital readmission, a hospital is penalized roughly around $35,000. Is that correct, Dr. Loner?
It is.
It's a reimbursement piece. They can't get reimbursed for the care. So.
They get penalized also. Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Loner.
I know there's a multifaceted question. So yes, they, so they can't get reimbursed and there's a decreased collection. But I have to say also as a practicing emergency clinician, in the emergency department, I can tell you that our goal is not to, you know, we try not to politicize healthcare and we try to admit patients that need to be admitted. The challenge is, is that at least in, in my world and the world that is at Hopkins and every other hospital is that the bed situation is difficult. So because you have this cap and because you have the global budget and the, the drive is to get people out of the hospital for resources, the inpatient beds don't exist. This is against the staffing problem. So the people that are waiting for beds are actually those patients that need to be admitted. And I can tell you, I admit patients regardless of whether they've been readmitted or not. And that's one of the major challenges unfortunately won't solve here because if you have somebody with diabetes or CHF, they're coming back to the hospital and we're going to admit them regardless of whether we won't be able to get that money. And I think the real challenge, so your point is very well taken. We absolutely need to work with the hospitals. The biggest challenge is the lack of inpatient beds and the lack of staffing. Because the patients that are boarding at hospitals are the admitted ones. And trust me, if I can get anyone out of the hospital, I will even tell the patients that. The wait for a bed, my last shift, I had somebody in the emergency department for 56 hours. So that's not because we don't want to admit them. It's because there is no place for them to go.
Councilwoman, just to go a step further, there, there was instances a few weeks ago. One ED over a night shift had two nurses in the emergency room. Another one had three working the entire night. That's very, very few nurses. The other problem they have is they have beds, but they gotta, there's a, there's a model. You gotta have one nurse to X number of beds. If they don't have the staff for that, those beds don't get filled. That's one of the other problems, right? It's, it's, it's all over the place. The H S C R C and the ACA, yes, that's part of it. But there's all the little pieces as well.
Yeah, we, we will continue to work with those hospitals too, because there are a lot of other targets, especially when you talk about behavioral health on the backend. So there's a big discussion about behavioral health borders. So for example, you can have in any emergency department, five or six patients waiting for psychiatric bed placement. And the apparatus that places patients in those beds, they reevaluate them every morning at 8:00 AM, which is obviously not great if you're either on a weekend or if you present with a behavioral health emergency later. So you can imagine if we can place patients in stabilization centers, transport them on the backend and work with hospitals on offload, I, I think that's where the biggest bang for the buck is. But, you know, sadly, our healthcare system is, is really functioning at capacity and these hospitals that are struggling. They do so because there is not a place to put a lot of these admission, admitted patients, which by the way, is reflected in the restructuring of a lot of hospitals. You'll notice, for example, a lot of hospitals are returning to these freestanding EDs, right? Because they don't have a hospital attached to them, such as Grace Medical Center, because it's very expensive in the overhead. The challenge, of course, is that the beds are always at a premium because they're at a fixed, they're at a fixed level. And that's certainly something that is well beyond, I know, this conversation and a huge challenge.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that explanation. I look forward to exploring that further. That was it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilman Cohen, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone for this conversation. And just to quickly cosign onto what Dr. Loner just said, my wife's a psychiatrist and I'm up beds. And she works in Cherry Hill and the capacity is far is exceeded dramatically by the amount of patients that come in. And so just keeping folks is really, really, really difficult. And I think it's frustrating to doctors and nurses and all medical professionals. You know, in terms of sort of the population that you all are lifting up, I really think that is sort of the question of the day, which is folks who are mentally ill, in many cases homeless, in many cases substance addicted. And in many cases, I think were who we would have had in mental institution, mental hospitals before we deinstitutionalized. And those places were pretty terrible, but when we did so, there was no, nothing there. And so people I think have ended up either in jail or on the streets. And that is what we see all across our country and in cities like Baltimore. That being said, one thing that in the trauma informed care task force, we've talked a lot about is I do think for this population, there is a need for housing first. At least that's what I think the literature, the research will tell you for folks who are highly traumatized and have all these other issues, like nothing else can happen if they don't have a safe, stable place to live. They're just going to be cycling in and out, in and out. And so I, I do wonder in this moment where we have ARPA dollars from the federal government, you know, is there a conversation about, you know, between the health systems, between fire, between mayor's office, homeless services, between everybody about really trying to figure out some form of permanently stable housing specifically for the population of people that are the most difficult to deal with, understanding that that will also require wraparound services and all the rest. I'm just curious, like, are we having that conversation? And you know, if not, why not? Because it just seems like fire alone and the hospitals can't solve this alone.
Councilman, there, there are conversations going on at, at our level about many different attributes about the circumstances that we're in. As you know, there, there, there are certain parameters to offer funds. So we have to make sure we respect those parameters, but there, we have, we have, and I can honestly say this, we have done everything as, and, and I'm not just talking about us, I'm talking about health department as well, of trying to reach around and trying to figure out as many avenues to resolve these problems as we can. But you are right, there are, there are, there are significant systemic issues that are beyond the fire department's grasp and, and even us and the health department together. So I, I don't want to disagree with that, but, but we are, we are working together, trying to figure out long-term solutions, big solutions for what is a significant problem.
I appreciate that. I just think like now is the time and, you know, it's going to take more than fire and health. Because there are so many interconnected issues going on here that we see manifesting in this, you know, relatively small, but significant group of people that are in our city. And thank you and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I, you know, I, I think you hit the nail on the head there that we, we definitely deinstitutionalized and didn't really pick up the slack on meeting the needs of those services. And I think we have a system by which folks who may have mental health issues can resort to self-medicating, which then creates overdose issues. And it's a cycle with which our EMS system is now overwhelmed with trying to meet the needs of those folks. And so we, we, we need to be working with the health department, with healthcare for homeless, with B C R I and otherwise to figure out what solution we should be pulling together, resolve that, that gap in service right now. And, you know, right now it's all landing on you guys.
But I, I'm just going to add a very short statement. COVID was enough of a nudge to show us how much of a crisis our circumstances are. And, and, and within, I'm talking about within healthcare and the homeless population and a great number of social issues we deal with. But within that, it's given us an opportunity. I'm speaking on behalf of fire department only. It's given us an opportunity to try a whole lot of new initiatives. And throughout that, we've been able to troubleshoot a lot of issues, you know, the, the speech John Kennedy gave when he said crisis and, and Chinese writing can be interpreted as opportunity. So we, we, we view this as an opportunity to try to resolve or try to try and do things. And there's been a great deal of things that within our auspices that we realize we can do that actually works. And I'm not saying, and I'm going to go back to what, what, what both, both, both my esteemed presenter said. There's not one single resolution for these problems. It's a, it's a plethora of resolutions. And, and then we have to be, we have to be sober enough not to hold on to initiatives that don't work and move on to the next one. And, and not get caught up with, with any problems that we have, just dust ourselves off and move to the next one. Too often I think we, we get caught up with, with processes and expect they're supposed to work and keep pushing on them. And it's not working. We need to move on to the next thing.
Thank you, Chief Ford. Any other questions from the committee?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question real quick? Chief Matts?
No, no, you can't ask any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm kidding, you can ask.
No, my question is, we've never done EMS stat or anything like that. Is this the format? Is this, you like that arrangement, how we did that? Because going forward, I just want to make sure, because we're the ones putting that together. If that's what you're looking for, that's what you'll have going forward as a commitment.
That is what I'm looking for. And I'm hoping that the data can, can help us really narrow down on the problems and, and help to figure out where we should be thinking about solutions. So that was incredibly helpful. I want to thank you, Chief Matts. Thank you, Chief Ford. Thank you, Dr. Loner. I really appreciate you guys walking us through all those pieces and I, I expect that this, this will be a very helpful way, I think, for you guys to begin to think about and for us as policymakers to think about how we can help you be, be more effective and efficient. And for us as policymakers to think about how we can help you be, be more effective and efficient and, and better meet the needs of, of the city of Baltimore. So with that, I think, I think I'm all out of questions. I have some other small ones, but I think given the, the sort of hefty conversation we just had, those are the things I can follow up with you guys individually. Any other questions from, from council members before we wrap up? All right, seeing no further questions, this hearing is, is in recess and we will catch you all at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and attention. Thank you.